If everyone could take their seats, please. Thank you. If anyone could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please, and then remain standing for a moment of silence. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Mathie.
Here.
Councilmember Bowlin.
Here.
Councilmember Mawamwe.
Here.
Councilmember Imig.
Present.
Councilmember Painter.
Here.
Councilmember Corillo.
Here.
Councilmember Black.
Here.
Councilmember Crable.
Here.
Councilmember Bray.
Here.
Mayor Renner.
Here. Thank you very much. We're going to start with Proclamations. And we have a proclamation recognizing September as National Suicide Prevention Month, and we're going to go ahead with that. And as I understand, we do not have someone available to take possession of the proclamation this evening. Is that correct?
That's correct. We're going to read it and then be mailing it out to them.
Okay. The proclamation, September is National Suicide Prevention plus Action Month. Whereas September is known around the United States as National Suicide Prevention Awareness Month, most of us are quite aware of suicide. National Prevention plus Action Month is intended to help promote and give attention to the suicide prevention services available to us and our community. The goal is to speak openly about the topic of suicide, to help erase the stigma surrounding it, and to direct those in need to the appropriate support services that are available. And whereas suicide thoughts can affect anyone regardless of age, gender, race, sexual orientation, income, religion, or background, and whereas according to the American Foundation for Suicide Prevention, more than 47,000 people died by suicide in the year 2017, and whereas suicide is the 10th leading cause of death among adults in the United States, and nearly 20% of all suicides were completed by people between the ages of 45 and 54. And whereas Bloomington, Illinois is no different than any other community in the country, but chooses to publicly state and place our full support behind local educators, mental health professionals, athletic coaches, PAC leaders, police officers, and parents as partners in supporting our community in simply being available to one another. Whereas local communities like Suicide Prevention Services, national organizations like the National Alliance on Mental Illness, and international groups like Hope for the Day are on the front lines of a war that many still refuse to discuss, as suicide and mental illness remain too uncomfortable of a topic for some to talk about. And whereas every member of our community should understand that throughout life's struggles, we all need the occasional reminder that we're all fighting our own battles. And whereas I encourage all residents to take the time to check in with their families, their friends, their neighbors, on a regular basis, and to honestly communicate their appreciation for their existence, and by any gesture they deem appropriate, a simple phone call, a message, a handshake, or a hug can go a long way towards helping someone realize that suicide is not the answer. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Mayor Terry Renner, do hereby proclaim the month of September 2019 as Suicide, National Suicide Prevention Awareness Month in the city of Bloomington, Illinois. Thank you very much, and we certainly appreciate that. Thank you. Next, we move to appointments approved by the City Council at the September 9, 2019 meeting, and we have a -- are there those that are present who have so been appointed, or so were appointed? If you'd stand up, please.
Hi, my name's Michelle Grant.
Michelle? Anyone else? Well, Michelle, I get -- you're getting all of our applause tonight. Thank you very much for being willing to serve our community and to give your ideas, thoughts, perspective, and insights for that massive paycheck of nothing. Thank you. And we move next to public comment. Public comment is where you have up to three minutes to talk about whatever you'd like to talk about. And just to remind everyone, if you want to get immediate answers, I want to thank Alderman Scott Black for taking the mayoral open house last Friday. From 4:30 to 5:30, you can come, and it's usually me, sometimes it's Scott Black, sometimes it might be Maboko or other City Council members, but 90% of the more of the time it's myself and sometimes a member of the staff. We can get you answers, hopefully, immediately. Sometimes we can solve problems on the spot, not always, but at the very least, if you want a dialogue and begin to talk with us or your fellow citizens, that's the time to do it. But with respect to public comment, the policy of the council is to listen and to not respond. So you have up to three minutes, and I'm going to call these in groups of three so that we can have these happen as quickly as possible, as expeditiously as we can, so that we can move on to the regular part of our meeting. We have Kirk Allen, Diane Benjamin, and Scott Steimle. We start, excuse me, with Kirk.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it. My name is Kirk Allen. I'm a co-founder of the Edgar County Watch Dogs. I appreciate the Pledge of Allegiance, very much so as a veteran. Last three words of it, "Justice for all." Let that sink in for a minute. "Justice for all." When we get tips to our organization, we know pretty quick whether there's any validity to it based on, number one, the volume, and number two, the sources. And when we start getting a like tip from multiple public bodies on the same subject matter, we know there's usually something to it. So I would urge an internal investigation within the City Council to get to the bottom of a recent police officer that has left your office, left your service here in the city, and get to the bottom as to why he left. Because the one thing we need for, when we say "justice for all," it means anybody that may have potentially come across that officer and any actions that officer took. Because if that officer did some of the things that we're being told, you could have a very big legal problem coming down the road if they're not addressed in advance. And those people that could have possibly been wronged need their justice as well. And I would just urge that some hard questions get asked and some deep investigation go on into that matter. We will continue to ask and continue to get clarification from our sources, but I wanted to bring that to your attention. Thank you.
Thank you. Diane Benjamin, Scott Steimle, and Cinnamon Porter.
Hello, Council. I haven't been here in a long time. The last time I was here was probably the Coliseum, and you ignored me. John Butler goes on trial next month. What Kirk Allen just talked about is serious. If you don't take the time to investigate what's going on and get to the bottom of it, it's going to turn into another Coliseum. I'm just warning you, don't blow me off this time. Everybody got that? Thank you. See ya.
Scott Steimle, Cinnamon Porter.
One more note. There's Black Lives Matter people out here, and I think they have a point.
Call Ripley's. Georgianne Chisel as well. So Scott Steimle, Cinnamon Porter, and Georgianne Chisel.
Okay, Scott Steimle, Ward 5. My concern is, as I've been saying all along, is the Americans with Disabilities Act became law in 1990. It required that all sidewalks be ADA accessible. Terry, I don't know. Maybe you and the council don't get it. That's 19 years ago. I wonder if somebody would be 19 years late and paying their property taxes, their property still be there. You know, good and well, it wouldn't. We've seen enough corruption in the city of Bloomington with the Coliseum. We've seen people go to jail over it. We've seen you call Diane Benjamin "a worthless piece of garbage." Terry, that is conduct unbecoming of mayor. They needed -- the council should have removed you right then. I'm embarrassed to say that Terry Renner's the mayor of Bloomington. I really am.
Okay. Cinnamon Porter, thank you, and then Georgianne Chisel, and Don Carlson.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Cinnamon Porter, and I'm a resident of Ward 4 of Bloomington, and I'm here on behalf of Black Lives Matter. I'm here today to publicly affirm our support for the, excuse me, Cannabis Task Force and the potential for reparation towards folks, especially folks of color, who have suffered from decades of overpolicing and incarceration for cannabis and cannabis-related offenses. According to the ACLU, black people have made up 15% of Illinois' population, but made up 60% of cannabis possession arrests, making them eight times more likely to be arrested than whites, though studies show that cannabis is used at roughly the same rates between white and black people. Generations of disproportionate enforcement, sentencing, and incarceration for cannabis has led to separated families, community instability, exasperated poverty, as well as hiring and housing discrimination and civic exclusion. This new law governing cannabis uses to seek to address some of the implications of generations of oppressive racist policy with built-in expungement provisions that seek to work with law enforcement to identify cannabis-related arrests in recent years and expunge the records of an estimated 800,000 people. Additionally, 25% of the tax revenue generated by legalization is slated to go towards the Restore, Reinvest, and Renew program to aid communities most impacted by economic disinvestment, violence, and the lingering effects of incarceration linked to heavier penalties during the War on Drugs. We are also very excited to see the economic opportunities awarded or afforded to the communities that were targeted by the War on Drugs, as the state will waive half of the application fees for license seekers who are long-term residents of an impacted area or who have been incarcerated for a minor cannabis crime eligible for expungement under the law. Applicants who qualify for these opportunities and receive a license to grow marijuana in Illinois will also be eligible for low-interest loans and other startup aid. The task force is a crucial piece to helping ensure that communities who have suffered in Bloomington have a voice and economic opportunity as this bill becomes a reality in January. As black folks have continually suffered, they must be at the table as we discuss these important impacts here in Bloomington. We look forward to your support of the task force and your insistence of representation of people of color at the decision-making table. Thank you.
Thank you. Georgienne Chisel, and then Don Carlson.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm here just to say some, give you some good feedback, I guess you can say. This year, I was noticing our downtown area and our big flower pots. I don't know who's in charge of those, if they change every year or however you guys do that, but they were beautiful this year, absolutely gorgeous. And they just overflowed with just so much beauty. So I just wanted to share that with you. And then one other thing, the flags during, I was driving down Veterans Parkway during Memorial Day weekend and noticed these beautiful flags. Oh, my God, they were so beautiful, and it just made me so proud to be in Bloomington that, you know, at that particular time, it just gave me this great feeling. And so after the weekend, I thought they were going to be up, you know, during the whole summer, and after the weekend, they were gone. I'm like, oh, no! So I don't know who's in charge of those, but my wish, and I'm just one out of 78,000 people, is that if they could stay up until after Veterans Day. I mean, it's just a wonderful, wonderful feeling, driving down Veterans, seeing those flags up. And the third point is that I'm here to state my support for the current nominees for the Cannabis Task Force chosen by Mayor Renner, especially the two councilwomen. Thank you. Thank you.
Don Carlson.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, I'd like to add my support to Cinnamon Porter's comments earlier from Black Lives Matter. I live in Councilwoman, Councilperson Imig's ward, and I'm a board member of a new political organization called One People's Campaign. In the last election cycle, we knocked on 3,000 doors with 30 volunteers, and the result of which we celebrate in two councilmembers sitting at the dais today. We strongly support the creation of the Cannabis Task Force as presented by Councilperson Jennifer Corillo. Councilperson Corillo has taken the initiative on this issue, and it's important to respect and honor that work. The time is now for a process that includes everyday people that can move quickly and thoughtfully. We live in a time where supposedly Americans hate politics, but we know from our own experience that everyday people are engaged in politics more than ever before. What people hate is not politics, but obstructionism, a form of politics that doesn't advance ideas but delays movement on policy. We see that in Mitch McConnell in the United States Senate, and we don't need those bad lessons played out here in Bloomington. The Illinois Legislature has done its job, and now is the time for you to do yours and empower this task force. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you all again for your comments. We're going to move right along.
Excuse me? Would it be possible to control the distraction?
We have, when people have clapped, as long as it's not been disruptive, if it's been the course of 10 seconds, we've not really controlled that. I don't know how disruptive that is. If people start cheering and it disrupts our meeting, that's a different story. But if you have any different ideas, you certainly are welcome to make some recommendations.
Well, I have a recommendation, Mayor. As the person running the meeting, I think it's appropriate for you to call for a business atmosphere in our meeting. This isn't a pep rally. This is a business meeting. We have other times when we do pep rallies, or we have other discussions in the community. This is the business meeting section. So I think you, as the monitor of this meeting, are responsible for keeping the order and calling the order.
Sure. And I'm happy to do so. Given the light applause that we had at the last point on a scale of 1 to 10, I think we maybe had a 1.5 out of 10 of the ones that I've heard over the years. But anyway, okay, okay.
Mayor, let's perhaps, we'll debate that then, because should, will this meeting now then become a time when Ward 9 needs to bring all their pep rally people and Ward 1 needs to bring their pep rally, because certainly certain persons here have brought along their advocates?
I think people have done that in the past, but at this point, this particular conversation is--
May I finish my sentence?
You can, but this whole conversation's out of order.
May I finish?
Go ahead.
No, you asked. You asked for a suggestion. Yes, you did.
Not at this moment.
You said, "If anyone has a suggestion, then they should speak up." I'm speaking up. My suggestion is that you fulfill your role and that you take order over this business meeting, and you don't let it degrade into a pep rally, which it should not be. Thank you.
And I appreciate that, and I would not do that. We have had times in the past where it has, and light applause is not disruptive. When people start using four-letter words, or they start cheering in massive moments over the last six years, we've had some of those, and we have, regardless of what the particular cause is. But anyway, anyway, this seemed like a pretty light comment to me, or light applause to me. But at this point, we're going to just go on to the consent agenda. Are there items, item or items, that any members of the council would like to have removed from the consent agenda for separate consideration or discussion at this point? 7A, please. 7A.
7M.
7M, as in Michael.
As in Mary.
Okay. And councilman?
A 7B, please. Thank you, Mayor.
7B. Okay, so let me just, 7A was Alderman Mathie, 7M was Alderman, Alderwoman Bowlin, and then Alderwoman Bray on the consideration of zoning map. Okay. Alderman Mathie.
Thank you, Mayor. I, my only question on 7A, I think it's great to see the downtown businesses tagging in and working to create an even bigger celebration in front of a major concert. I just had a couple of questions regarding traffic and parking, because Front Street is the pathway to the biggest and closest parking deck to the arena, and I just was curious what the plans for rerouting traffic to make sure people can park appropriately were going to be, if anybody has any comments on that.
Do we have anyone? Somebody from Community Development, maybe?
I'm going to go for it, but I think Assistant Chief Scott.
Oh, Scott, okay.
Greg, did you address this when we were circulating the approval? And if so, could you step to the podium?
Question of traffic and parking wasn't specifically addressed in the special event request. However, the parking deck would still be used as well as the Coliseum parking area.
I was just thinking with all the people that are being routed coming in down 51, they're not going to be able to turn, you know, they're going southbound, they're not going to be able to turn left on the front street to get to the deck, and we're going to need some way--
There will be roadway markers that say that the roadwayhead is blocked, is closed. Police works will put those signs up.
Okay. Like I said, it was just a thought process because of these huge country concerts have created parking and traffic situations in downtown before, and I just want to make sure we're--
The roadway will much be blocked, much like it is for the Jazz Up Front Fest, so that there's still access to the parking deck.
Okay. So we'll have some way to tell people to go around and come back the other way to get to it?
Yeah, have the same roadway markers.
Perfect. Thank you. Appreciate that.
Okay. Hold on. Councilmember Bowlin.
Excuse me. Is, well, Front Street is where the connect transit buses also pull up. Will there be a problem at all with that?
As I recall, the special event, they're being relocated over onto Center Street.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? All right. Is there a motion on this?
I'd like to make a motion to approve as presented.
Okay. Moved by Alderman Mathie. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Painter. Any further discussion?
Quick question.
Oh, sure.
Typically, I think we approve the agenda, the consent agenda, before approving this item. Yeah. I don't know that it makes a difference, but--
Of course it does. Okay. Well, if I could just back up with the, you know, permission of Alderman Mathie--
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as presented with the exceptions of 7M and 7B.
But also--
A and B.
Well, I was just going to wrap that in in one tidy bow, but--
Oh, at this point, I got you. Okay.
Since we already got my questions asked.
With the exceptions of B and M. Very, very good. Okay. Okay. I don't think I'd want to play chess with you. Okay. Any, is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Second by Alderman Black. Okay, if everyone will go ahead and vote on this. So this is to approve everything except B and M. Okay? Okay? There we go. Motion carries 9 to 0. There are no needs to announce, Madam Clerk. All right. Now we go to the second item, actually, which was pulled in order of being pulled by Alderwoman Bowlin, and that's M, and that is consideration to approve appointment of the Cannabis Task Force.
Okay, I'd like to just make some, a few comments regarding this. We're blessed to be living in a democratic society, but our form of government is a representative republic. I believe that it's my responsibility to do the homework and the research, discuss with my colleagues, and to make decisions based on the needs of the community at large. I take this responsibility very seriously. I respect the decision of the council majority to form a task force, but I do not feel that I need a task force to advise me on the decisions that will be made that affect the community. The state legislature, or the state legislation severely limits what the municipal-- what the municipal--
I live in Councilwoman, Councilperson Emix Ward, and I'm a board member of a new political organization called One People's Campaign. In the last election cycle, we knocked on 3,000 doors with 30 volunteers, and the result of which we celebrate in two council members sitting at the dais today. We strongly support the creation of the Cannabis Task Force as presented by Councilperson Jennifer Carrillo. Councilperson Carrillo has taken the initiative on this issue, and it's important to respect and honor that work. The time is now for a process that includes everyday people that can move quickly and thoughtfully. We live in a time where supposedly Americans hate politics, but we know from our own experience that everyday people are engaged in politics more than ever before. What people hate is not politics, but obstructionism, a form of politics that doesn't advance ideas, but delays movement on policy. We see that in Mitch McConnell in the United States Senate, and we don't need those bad lessons played out here in Bloomington. The Illinois Legislature has done its job, and now is the time for you to do yours and empower this task force. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you all again for your comments. We're going to move right along.
Excuse me? Would it be possible to control the distraction?
We have, when people have clapped, as long as it's not been disruptive, if it's been the course of 10 seconds, we've not really controlled that. I don't know how disruptive that is. If people start cheering and it disrupts our meeting, that's a different story. But if you have any different ideas, you certainly are welcome to make some recommendations.
Well, I have a recommendation, Mayor. As the person running the meeting, I think it's appropriate for you to call for a business atmosphere in our meeting. This isn't a pep rally. This is a business meeting. We have other times when we do pep rallies or we have other discussions in the community. This is the business meeting section. So I think you, as the monitor of this meeting, are responsible for keeping the order and calling the order.
Sure. And I'm happy to do so. Given the light applause that we had at the last point on a scale of 1 to 10, I think we maybe had a 1 and 1/2 out of 10 of the ones that I've heard over the years. But anyway.
So Mayor, let's perhaps, we'll debate that then. Because should, will this meeting now then become a time when Ward 9 needs to bring all their pep rally people and Ward 1 needs to bring their pep rally because certainly certain persons here have brought along their advocates?
I think people have done that in the past, but at this point, this particular conversation is...
May I finish my sentence?
You can, but this whole conversation's out of order.
May I finish? No, you asked. You asked for a suggestion. Yes, you did.
Not at this moment.
You said, "If anyone has a suggestion, then they should speak up." I'm speaking up. My suggestion is that you fulfill your role and that you take order over this business meeting, and you don't let it degrade into a pep rally, which it should not be. Thank you.
And I appreciate that, and I would not do that. We have had times in the past where it has, and light applause is not disruptive. When people start using four-letter words or they start cheering in massive moments over the last six years, we've had some of those, and we have, regardless of what the particular cause is. But anyway. Anyway, this seemed like a pretty light comment to me, or light applause to me. But at this point, we're going to just go on to the consent agenda. Are there items, item or items, that any members of the council would like to have removed from the consent agenda for separate consideration or discussion at this point? 7A, please.
7M?
7M.
As a Michael. As a Mary.
Okay. And Councilman?
A 7B, please. Thank you, Mayor.
7B. Okay, so let me just, 7A was Alderman Mathie. 7M was Alderman, Alderwoman Bowlin. And then Alderwoman Bray on the consideration of zoning map. Okay. We'll start out with the consideration in the order in which they were received from Alderman Mathie.
Thank you, Mayor. I, my only question on 7A, I think it's great to see the downtown businesses tagging in and working to create an even bigger celebration in front of a major concert. I just had a couple of questions regarding traffic and parking because Front Street is the pathway to the biggest and closest parking deck to the arena, and I just was curious what the plans for rerouting traffic to make sure people can park appropriately were going to be, if anybody has any comments on that.
Okay. Do we have anyone? Somebody from Community Development, maybe?
I'm going to go for it, but I think Assistant Chief Scott.
Oh, Scott, okay.
Greg, did you address this when we were circulating the approval? And if so, could you step to the podium?
The question of traffic and parking wasn't specifically addressed in the special event request. However, the parking deck would still be used as well as the Coliseum parking area.
I was just thinking with all the people that are being routed coming in down 51, they're not going to be able to turn, you know, they're going southbound. They're not going to be able to turn left on the Front Street to get to the deck, and we're going to need some way.
There will be roadway markers that say that the roadway ahead is blocked, is closed. Police works will put those signs up.
Okay. Like I said, it was just a thought process because of these huge country concerts have created parking and traffic situations in downtown before, and I just want to make sure we're...
The roadway will much be blocked, much like it is for the Jazz Up Front Fest, so that there's still access to the parking deck.
Okay. So we'll have some way to tell people to go around and come back the other way to get to it?
Yeah. Have the same roadway markers.
Perfect. Thank you. Appreciate that.
Okay. Hold on. Councilmember Bowlin.
Excuse me. Well, Front Street is where the connect transit buses also pull up. Will there be a problem at all with that?
As I recall, the special event, they're being relocated over onto Center Street.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? All right. Is there a motion on this? I didn't approve it.
I'd like to make a motion to approve as presented.
Okay. Moved by Alderman Mathie. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Painter. Any further discussion?
Quick question.
Oh, sure.
Typically, I think we approve the agenda, the consent agenda, before approving this item. Yeah. I don't know that it makes a difference, but...
That, of course it does.
Okay.
Okay. Well, if I could just back up with the, you know, permission of Alderman Mathie.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as presented with the exceptions of 7M and 7B.
But also, A, B...
Well, I was just going to wrap that in one tidy bow, but...
Oh, at this point, I got you. Okay. So with the exceptions of B and M. Very, very good. Okay. Okay. I don't think I'd want to play chess with you. Okay. Any, is there a second to that motion? Second by Alderman Black. Okay. If everyone will go ahead and vote on this. So this is to approve everything except B and M. Okay? There we go. Motion carries 9 to 0. There are no needs to announce, Madam Clerk. All right. Now we go to the second item, actually, which was pulled in order of being pulled by Alderwoman Bowlin, and that's M. And that is consideration to approve appointment of the Cannabis Task Force.
Okay. I'd like to just make some, a few comments regarding this. We're blessed to be living in a democratic society, but our form of government is a representative republic. I believe that it's my responsibility to do the homework and the research, discuss with my colleagues, and to make decisions based on the needs of the community at large. I take this responsibility very seriously. I respect the decision of the council majority to form a task force, but I do not feel that I need a task force to advise me on the decisions that will be made that affect the community. The state legislation severely limits what the municipality can do. It is very clear about all the comments that address the comments from the people that spoke are addressed in that legislation. The legislation is in flux. The only thing that the council member, council has to decide prior to the deadline is whether or not we opt out. That, of course, will determine with the tax, if we decide to tax. I restate my opposition to the formation of the task force. To be consistent with that vote, I will be voting no to this agenda item. My vote for this is in no way to be taken personally for the people that are appointed, nor are my comments to be construed in any way that I am against anything that has to do with the cannabis legislation. Thank you.
Just wanted to ask, no, that's just a comment, correct? That wasn't a motion necessarily?
I'm optioned to vote no or disapprove.
Okay. And just to our legal counsel, essentially, we're talking about, isn't this a reconsideration of something the council has already approved?
Well, this is the, this is consideration of the appointments.
But the particular motion, the particular statement was made that a council member is objecting to the item that was approved a week ago by the city council?
No, I'm objecting to 7M, which is the thing that I pulled. I'll second that. Thank you.
But as I understood, you were against the formation of the task force, which is why, right?
That is in my comment, but what I am voting on, or voting against tonight is 7M because I do respect my colleagues and their decision that was made to form a task force. However, I voted against that, and to be consistent in my voting, I am voting against the appointments.
Okay. And there was a second to the motion?
Yes, I second that.
So under those circumstances, it's just a comment made relative to a decision previously made? So there's no, there are no procedural issues? Okay. Okay. Thank you.
So I second that, and I'd like to speak to it.
Okay.
So I've seconded the motion here that we disaffirm the slate of candidates and then put forward, and I'd like to speak to why. I voted against the task force, but once it was voted for, I thought, well, let's have a good face effort then to make this a useful mechanism for our community. So I looked forward to having us collect the names of all interested parties and communicating that a timely submission would net someone's consideration on this task force. That did not happen here. Individuals of the community that were interested, who could bring broader, broad perspectives, which is something that we would greatly benefit from in work with this task force, were not even considered, and that's troubling. I think that only through incorporating multiple perspectives on this tough issue will we be truly informed by a task force effort. In attending the Illinois Municipal League, I spent hours and hours listening to the experts in the area of cannabis and medical cannabis and taking cannabis into recreational space. The one word they used consistently was uncertainty. There's uncertainty in this space, and there's a lot of things that we just won't know, regardless of how much we study it. There's a lot of things that still are to come. And what that says to me is that, as a member, an elected official representing people, and we have a word system that says that we have all these perspectives that are supposed to be represented, that we all need to be up to speed at all times. And as I look at this slate, I'm not sure that we've achieved the balance that we need in getting those perspectives. I liken it to playing baseball. I love, I played softball, committed to softball growing up. I played third base, but we didn't need a team of all third basemen to win games. We needed pitchers, we needed catchers, we needed outfielders. And again, I feel like this task force as created has kind of a preset inclination, and I don't think that serves our community well. So for that reason, I'll be voting no, and I've seconded this motion that we disapprove the slate of candidates as set forth. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Before I move to Alderman Black, just to clarify, it was a week ago tonight that the council wanted to move forward with the Cannabis Task Force and to move forward so that the nominees would be presented, not the deadline for applications, but that the nominees be presented to the city manager to send to the council by noon the next day. Actually, if the council wanted to wait longer, that would have made my Monday evening and my Tuesday morning a lot more open and a lot less stressful, to be frankly, to be frank. Excuse me. So anyway, pursuant to that is the reason why the people were sent. And the council actually built into this task force the diversity, that is, people from law enforcement, someone from addiction counseling, two members from the city council. And of course, as you're going through and talking to people sometimes, and as I've had several people in the city council, a couple of people tell me, "No, I don't have time," or people from the community. So anyway, this was put together, and it was put together in a timely fashion, and it was put together consistent with getting the names to people by Monday, excuse me, by Tuesday the next morning in order to expedite this. If that's not the wish of the council, then that's fine, but we can explore other options. The mayor could appoint a task force like we've had in the past. And unlike some of the comments that we've had before, the task forces we've had in the past have been very good task forces. The budget task force outlined and determined for us for about a year and a half what this council could or could not cut. And that is, we found out would cost us more money, for example, to privatize golf. So there were many things that were good. Was it perfect? Of course not. Nothing's perfect. The same thing with the Downtown Task Force. Whether we agree with everything that was in the Downtown Task Force, it's probably one of the greatest, the best reports I've seen of inductive reasoning in 30 years. So there have been good things that happened with task forces. So certainly, one item is if the council decides that they don't want this, I am not going to have gone out and asked people and browbeat, in some cases, people, "Get your applications in, we need you now," and then say, "Oh, by the way, never mind. We don't want you." That's the difficulty. It's one of the reasons why councils are rarely involved aggressively in making appointments. As Mr. Jurgens has noted, there's a Supreme Court nomination, or excuse, Supreme Court decision, state Supreme Court decision. If you really want, the council wants to make appointments, fine. Change your form of government by referendum. The other way is run for mayor and win, if you really want to make appointments. So there are a variety of issues that are, you know, situated here. And we had six years, and more than that, because in the previous generation, sorry to pick on you again, Moboka, yours was the only nomination in a generation of multiple mayors and multiple councils that was ever really called out. And by the way, the council lost. Obviously, you're sitting there. So at the end of the day, collegial bodies have never been very effective at making appointments to hundreds of people, to boards and commissions. There are nearly 300. But at that point, I will shift to Alderman Black.
Thank you. I guess my questions are more for Jeff at this point. So suppose that this motion were to pass. What was, that means that we would have rejected the slate of candidates, and then the mayor would have to produce another 10 candidates. Could he use the same names on those 10, or could, did he pick an entirely different 10? What's the legal obligation at that point?
He could use similar names. There may be no, no requirement that he cannot bring forward another name. So for example, if there are a couple of people that...
Do you want to hop up to the mic just so? Sorry, Jeff. Put you in the hot seat.
No, the, I believe that the mayor could utilize some of the same names. So at this point, it looks like kind of the slate is what is being proposed to not be ratified, so he could bring forward some of the same names, different names. Again, it's subject to the advice and consent of the council. And the only time that the council can eventually override the mayor is actually for the aldermatic positions. So it's really kind of that cat and mouse until that magic fit gets into that slot.
So just so I'm clear, it sounds like if we were to accept the rejection of the entire slate, the mayor could come back at any point. There's no timeframe requirement?
That's right.
With some, none, or all of the current appointments?
That's right. I think the only timeframe requirement is in the resolution, I believe it was passed, you know, for, to come back with this report at the, at the committee of the whole in October. So if you keep extending it, obviously, that report is less and less likely to be able to come forward.
Thank you.
Other comment? Councilmember Crable.
I had a few questions for Alderwoman Carrillo. With regard to the task force, I'm assuming that you will bring in potential speakers and experts beyond just the task force?
Yeah. I mean, that could be something that we do, but we have not, I have not been appointed to the task force. So I don't know what we do.
Understand. But that's certainly a possibility.
Sure.
Okay. And certainly, people can get names to you if they think they have interest or would be beneficial to the task force to hear from?
Yeah. That's something I'd absolutely like to see for this task force to take on.
Okay. Thank you.
Aldermember Bray.
So we all know that there were other names that were put forward for potential folks to serve on the task force. And so when I think about how we create a resource pool for our community, I think about pulling together, again, we've talked a little bit about broad perspectives, but I think we also would want to pull together people with knowledge and experience in certain areas that could share, not only with the task force, but with the community at large. When we developed our Police and Community Relations Board, we adopted a procedure wherein the community was clearly, received clear communications about deadlines for submission of applications. Anyone who was interested could put in an application, and then each of us received binders, and I keep me honest here, but 60-some applicants put in for those positions. We, each person in the city council and the mayor, we all received binders filled with those applications, and we had an opportunity then to cull through those applications and think about what a good team from our community would look like to work on these tough issues because it was important, was important to the community to get it right. And we did that. And we had a timeframe in which we each had to select our 10. But in the interim, we could talk with one another, think about who's the third baseman, who's the outfielder, who's got catching position covered, you know. So we did that. We put names forward to you, Mayor, and then you were advised of the, I think, maybe the clerk at the time correlated those results, who were the high scorers, and you took a look at it, and then you made some decisions about who would serve on that particular board. Perhaps something of that nature would serve us well for something as important as this cannabis issue.
Just a couple of things. First of all, the mayor was under, as I or any mayor would be, under no obligation to do that. I did that because that was a very high-profile, long-term, permanent board that had been discussed for a very long time. So I actually deferred to the council, and I automatically took the top seven names of the people who were mentioned. This is a temporary one. What's typical in Illinois is councils get in 48 to 72 hours, almost everywhere in Illinois, you get names. That may not be the best way to do it. There are no application forms. You may get a listing of whether or not, what their occupation is. And that's what's typical. Whether that's good or not, I don't think that's good. I think some of what we've done is good. But that was a very unusual board, that's the only time I used that procedure. And this is, this is a 90-day board. This is a commission. What we're having over the, since I've been reelected, not reelected, excuse me, since the middle of my second term, for the first six years, we had no issues like this. Over the last four months, we've had issues of board and commission appointments where the council's getting into the weeds, and this is not helpful for anything. And that's, that's the difficulty. There are reasons why collegial bodies don't make appointments.
Mayor, can I call a vote, please?
Sure. We'll just go ahead and call it. Thank you.
What are we voting on?
We're voting on the motion that was made.
Yes is to reject and no is to...
Yes is to reject the, the original motion that was made is yes to reject the 10 names that were appointed to the council. So either vote yes to reject or nay to not reject. Okay. Not everybody's voted. Okay. The motion is rejected by 7 to 2. There are two nays, oh, no, excuse me, I'm sorry. There are seven nays to announce, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Mathie, Councilmember Milombe, Councilmember Imick, Councilmember Painter, Councilmember Carrillo, Councilmember Black, Councilmember Crable.
Thank you very much. Okay. Now, do we have alternatively a motion to approve?
I, some of it.
Moved by Councilmember Carrillo. Is there a second? Second. Okay. I was going to say, it'd be odd if it failed by not having a second. A second by Councilmember Crable. At this point, an a is to approve the group as presented. Can we make a couple of comments? Of course.
Okay. All right. So I just wanted to say, I mean, the conversation that we've had over the past couple of weeks is part of the reason why I was a little bit concerned about a task force. Because over the past couple of weeks, I would say I've had questions about, you know, what's the makeup going to be? Who's going to be on it? What is the, you know, the geographic diversity? Why this many business owners and why not? You know? And so I think this highlights the difficulty and the concern that I had with it. I, you know, there are a number of people on the task force that I think are fine people. So I'm willing to be supportive of those folks. Let's give it a try, although I'm still a little bit skeptical of how this is going to work. I need to say that. But, you know, I say, let's, you know, let's move forward and see, see what happens.
Councilmember Bowlin.
I want to make it clear that my vote no is to be consistent with my vote no for the original.
Right. I understand. Thank you. Councilmember Black.
Thank you. And so, yeah, this conversation is always interesting, and I hear where you're coming from, Donna, and I appreciate you sharing that perspective. I don't share that philosophy, but I hear where you're coming from. And I really don't buy into the idea that Donna or Kim are obstructionists. I think that there's concerns, and I think it's how you think about consent and advising consent. And in this case, it's voting yes or no on the names that the mayor brings forward. You know, some of the things that, when we talked about the Police Review Board, which I think was a big success for our community and still is a big success in trying to model our process there, I think what Kim is hearing, and others have shared this as well, that there are people in the community that are concerned that it feels like they're not being heard or there's an agenda that's part of this task force, which I don't, I don't agree with that. And one of the ways that we controlled for that during the, the same kind of feedback we got during the Police Review Board conversation was that we asked for it to be, right out the gate, kind of a map of what the Police Review Board was going to do with the rules and how they were going to apply them and bring those before the city council for review so we could be, have total visibility of that. And I'd be curious, I don't know if we can do that via motion or if we need to do that via motion, but just to ask the Cannabis Task Force when they start, that after their meeting, that they map out what, how it's going to look over the next few months? You know, what are some of the touch points? What are some of the milestones? How is public comment going to be implemented? You know, just rough, high-level outlines so we can see that, so there's no question about how that process will be conducted. Because again, I'm getting feedback from others as well that they're concerned that this is not going to reflect accurately the position of the community. But the way that I see it is that this task force is going to give us a glimpse into a conversation between various stakeholders, and that conversation's going to provide value to us as we make a decision. So I guess I would ask, I don't know if the council... if the council disagrees with me wholeheartedly, but maybe after that first initial meeting with the cannabis task force, there's a very one-page summary report. Here's what we're gonna be doing over the next few weeks, up into the committee of the whole presentation, just so everybody can see it. There's total transparency, and then the public is engaged. And some of those names who, who I've heard of, and others who weren't selected, they can provide their feedback through those channels that will be provided.
Jeff, can I, just on, on the public comment question, I wonder if you could clarify that. Isn't there a standard, a standard procedure? Could you explain that?
Sure. As a formal committee or task force, they'll have to have public comment on every agenda. So they'll follow into the rules, same rules that we have for all of our other bodies that, that we create. So they will have, there will be an opportunity for the public to come and share their thoughts and opinions.
And it's up to three minutes, half hour, those kind of?
That's right. Yes. And can be extended, you know, by the task force as well, if, if, you know, they're having a big session to get community input, you know, the purpose of that, you know, obviously, they'd, they'd wanna extend that, so.
But, but to some of the concerns I'm hearing, I think it'd be very helpful to have a one-page report that, that speaks specifically to that question, that the public is welcome to speak during those, those comments, during public comment timeframe, as well as just kind of mapping out kind of the, the touchstones. So we know we're looking at at the end of the road. And that the, the public can watch and participate, which I think was the intention of what we were all looking for.
And, and I would second that, Scott. And I, I would even go further to add that I, for me personally, and I'm hoping, and I'm confident, that the, the group will give us that, is to give us really some pros and cons of each and every position. You know, if, you know, if you're looking to opt in or opt out, you know, we, we, and, and really give us a, a robust analysis of, you know, what either one of, of those positions would, would take us. So for example, we've talked about, I'm losing my train of thought here. So we, we, we've talked about, let's say, making Bloomington the, you know, the marijuana capital tourism, or something like that. So, you know, I want to be able to, you know, to have a conversation, you know, with everyone about what exactly does that mean for us? You know, what's the impact on kids, schools, and, and businesses as well, you know, and people coming into the community? Because this is not what we know. Bloomington is not known for that at this time. Okay? So I want us to be able to make a decision with our eyes wide open, and all the information available to us, you know. And we might go in one direction or another, but I, for me personally, I like to see all sides. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to clarify that we didn't actually have a conversation saying we want to be the marijuana capital of Illinois. That I think you're just terrified half the people that are watching at home right now. And I just wanted to make sure that you were kind of, at least I feel like you were saying that a little bit in jest. But I agree, Scott. I think it's a solid plan, just asking for a roadmap going forward. Because I in no way see a task force as abdicating any of the homework, the conversations, the research that I'll be doing. I just see it as a public conversation to hear from a lot of diverse people and backgrounds that we may not, I may not have the convers, uh, opportunity to talk to myself. So it's, it's, if anything, to me, the task force just is an additional layer beyond what I was planning on doing on my own research anyway. So I'll be supporting this. Thanks.
I'd just like to call for a vote.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Okay, if everyone will go ahead and vote, aye would be in favor of the task force appointees, and nay would be in opposed, of course. Okay. The motion carries seven to two. There are two nays to announce, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Bowman, Councilmember Bray.
Okay. Thank you so much. And then we're gonna go ahead and move to item eight A. It's a consideration and action on...
Seven B.
Oh, I'm sorry, we had one more. Thank you for keeping me, Johnny, that's your job to kick me. Okay. And that is Alderwoman Bray. That is seven B. I apologize. And that's consideration and action on the, an ordinance approving the zoning map amendment for eighteen fifteen Tuana Barnes Road adjacent.
Thank you, Mayor. So this item, we've taken a look at this, as this kind of was being worked on by staff. So Tim, I have a question about this. So the last time I asked about this change in zoning from commercial to ag, I was told that the city wasn't aware of any plans of any agricultural concerns, or, or anything of that nature. But that was earlier in the summer. I wonder have we, is there any updates in that regard? Or is it just simply that it's, it's just a change to align with current use?
I'm gonna ask Community Development Director Bob Mark come to the podium. We knew, we anticipated some questions regarding this item. Bob?
My understanding is that the true intent of the rezoning was to, to work towards, get away from the commercial assessment that's currently on the property. Now, it's, it's used agriculturally, but it still has the commercial assessment. So we had some discussions, our staff had discussions with the city township assessor, and they said regardless of whether it's used for ag, that it, that, that's really something they need to work through as, as far as whether it should be commercially assessed or agriculturally assessed. And that shouldn't be impacted on its current zoning.
I see. Thank you. So if, if a commercial opportunity presents itself to this particular property owner, and they want to switch back to commercial, could you kind of walk us through that? How would?
They would still make, they would still make application for the re, for the rezoning. And they'd come back before a public hearing before the planning commission. And then the planning commission would make that formal recommendation to the city council for approval or denial.
And so we'd have an opportunity to disapprove or approve that changed zoning as well?
That's correct. You have that opportunity this evening as well.
Okay, thank you. I'll make a motion that we pass.
Okay. Is there a second to Councilmember Bray's motion?
Second.
A couple. Councilmember Carrillo, Carrillos, 'cause I'm, I'm looking in that direction. Any other further comments? If everyone will go ahead and vote. The motion carries nine to zero. There are no nays to announce, Madam Clerk. We now move to a regular agenda, and that is item eight A. And it's consideration and action on classified non-union IMRF employee awareness as rec, uh, excuse me, requested by the Human Resources Department. And recommended motion is just information only, as pursuant to the Local Government Wages Increases Transparency Act. And I'm gonna turn this over to Mr. Gleason and any council discussion that we might have.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. As you stated, this is informational only, required by statute. And I'm gonna read the financial impact. Other items are up there on the board. The estimated sick leave vacation payout is anticipated to be nearly fifty-two thousand dollars. Assuming the employee does not diminish their sick leave bank or use vacation time prior to the retirement date, which is December thirty-first of this year, the accelerated payment for the payout is expected to be seventy thousand five hundred and fifty-five dollars. Also additionally, I'll remind the community more so, that council ended the sick leave buyback benefits for employees that were hired after two thousand twelve. So that action was taken quite some time ago. But all the pre-two thousand twelve employees still received the sick leave buyback benefits. Council would have been in fall of two thousand eighteen, by resolution, directed me to address sick leave buyback. That was done with the union contract negotiations and the non-represented employees. And by direction and by agreement, they have until October thirty-first of this year to signal their intent to retire. Because how sick leave buyback is paid out will change effective April thirtieth. Final date will change effective May first of two thousand twenty. Informational only.
Okay. Anything else? Any questions, comments by members of the council? Okay. Seeing none? Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah. How many more employees? Still some curiosity. Will be going through the process?
We're not quite sure what, what we'll have. We, we'll know that number by October thirty-first, because that's the deadline to signal the intention to retire, retire under this current payback formula.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Next is item eight B. Consideration and action to approve the purchase of the watershed consulting services for McLean County Soil and Water Conservation District pursuant to an intergovernmental agreement.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This actually is, appreciate the opportunity to have Public Works make this presentation. Evergreen Lake, Lake Bloomington are some of the greatest assets that the city of Bloomington has. And with that, we didn't want to just simply place this as a consent item, or a regular agenda item, and not take the opportunity, honestly, you know, the ten minutes to make this presentation, share with council, but more so the community, the great asset, and some of the steps that we're taking to preserve this. So I'm gonna turn this over to Public Works Director Jim Karch and team that are sitting in the front row. Thank you, Jim.
Thank you, City Manager Gleason. Mayor and City Council, this is a positive presentation tonight. We know that safe drinking water is one of the foundational elements of what we do as a community. And in keeping with that, the water that's produced by the city of Bloomington actually not just provides water for the city of Bloomington, there are other entities. Almost fifty percent of McLean County is served by this water. The source of that water comes from Evergreen Lake and Lake Bloomington. That's those watersheds are where the water comes into those bodies of water. It's important for us to protect and preserve those bodies. There is an existing ten-year master plan that we had, a watershed planning effort that was done in two thousand eight. It's time to update that. Tonight, we're gonna be talking about some grants, funding, and highlight some of the wonderful stakeholders we have with us tonight. In keeping with that, I'd just like to point out some of the people we have with us. Joe Dartor, our property lake manager, again, does a superb job all the time. Jackie Kraft, I'm actually gonna go jump over, because of the, the strong effort that she does with McLean County Soil and Water Conservation District. She is our main point of contact. And again, I'll highlight more of the efforts that she has done over the last ten years. A lot of the successes, I really will highlight and point out Jackie for that. And taking this position, whenever I entered into that, everybody said, you need to meet her. She has done a yo, just an excellent effort over these last ten years. And so again, I also wanna thank Anna Ziegler. She is the Assistant Manager with McLean County Farm Bureau. You'll notice twenty thousand dollars of this almost a hundred and fifty thousand dollar effort we're gonna talk about comes from the Illinois Farm Bureau. So our thanks to them. And then Dr. O'Reilly with Illinois State University. We're gonna highlight some of the partnerships that we have with them as well, from a student perspective. And so the educational efforts from doctoral theses that are done, and other efforts that are done with ISU students. Wonderful partnerships. It's not just them, there are others through intergovernmental agents, intergovernmental agreements that we also work with. So again, tonight is not just about Bloomington. There are many other people that are part of that effort. So let's highlight just briefly the, what has been done to this point. In ten years, a lot has been accomplished. I'd like to highlight four hundred and forty thousand dollars worth of grants during that time period. Four hundred and forty, I was doing the math, you know. Again, I'm, I'm the new director of this area, so I'm, okay, what's been done? I'm using my calculator. Four hundred and forty thousand dollars worth of funds that we've received from different entities. And again, I'll say that's just a big thanks to Jackie Kraft with McLean County Soil and Water District, because they'll say a lot of that is because of the efforts and the partnership that's been done. I'm going to jump down to that lower right hand. That, that really should have been a key, that lower right hand, where we talk about the National Water Quality Initiative Pilot Program. About two years ago, Bloomington was one of five in the whole nation watershed, watersheds that were selected for this pilot program. Why? Again, because of the partnership efforts that we have with McLean County Soil and Water District, and some of the efforts that we have with our stakeholders. A lot of thanks goes to our farmers, who have embraced some of this, these new improvements in how to protect the watershed. It is a group effort. There's a lot of people that go into protecting the quality of our water. And so, and again, there's been a lot of effort by students that over the years, that, and not just Millone State University. University of Illinois also helps with some of the monitoring as well. There have been extensive surveys that have been door-to-door, now, beating down doors. You can get a fifty-eight percent participation rate on a survey. That takes a lot of effort. And so we know that that was, just a, a lot of time and energy have gone into this watershed. Improvements have been made. Let's talk about those improvements. Seven thousand feet of shoreline stabilization has occurred around both of these bodies of water. Five thousand, five thousand feet of streambank stabilization has also occurred. That's almost a mile worth of streambank stabilization. There have been waterway improvements, including buffers, filter strips, grassways that have been improved. All of this is so that nutrients and sediment are trying to be reduced into our bodies of water to protect our water source. And again, wetlands is something that very few bodies of water really have that effort that we have done. There's two wetlands, one of them sponsored by Coca-Cola, of which you can make many jokes that you want. But we're thankful for that, for them to be able to partner with us on that. So with that, this grant that we are receiving tonight from the EPA is part of something the council approved to be, for us to go towards. In July of two thousand eighteen, there was an intergovernmental agreement this body passed. That effort was done. We did just receive it at the end of August of this year. Yes, it took over a year to receive. We still got it. And we're thankful for that. So almost sixty thousand dollars, fifty-eight thousand, three hundred and seventy-five dollars are coming from the EPA through this section three nineteen H grant. And then again, another twenty thousand dollars from the Illinois Farm Bureau, which means over half of the cost of updating these wetland plans are being paid for by other bodies. That is a wonderful improvement. And so we're very thankful for that. We did ask as well, how many people applied? You know, I, I can be a little competitive. We asked how many people applied. They wouldn't give it out to us, but we still, they said it was, it was not, it was not a common, it was not a common grant that received by all. So again, there's a lot to be thankful for with that. So what's next? Really, the key is hoping that this is passed tonight. It will take about eighteen months. It could be up to twenty-four. But we're hoping that within eighteen months, we can have some updated plans. It is not just a go back in a corner, write the plan, and be done with it. There is a lot of stakeholder involvement, multiple public meetings, reaching out to the impacted people. So this is very much the kickoff, hopefully, of a very public process, so that we can improve the plans associated over the next ten years to protect and preserve these water bodies. And so, with that being said, we'd take any questions that you have, and give back three minutes and fifty-one seconds to you.
Whoa, under budget. Questions to Mr. Karch. Councilmember Crable.
Not really a question, but Jim, just great job. Your department, great job, everyone here. And I really like the collaboration that you've had, and, and the fact that you're going to continue the collaboration, you know, to make this a success. So thank you.
Okay. Other questions, comments? Anything else, Mr. Gleason? Thank you. Thank you, Jim. Appreciate it. Thanks to you, to your staff. Very much appreciate all your work. And thank you. Okay. Next, we go to city managers' discussion.
We don't need a motion for this?
Oh, I'm sorry, we do need, thank you. I'm glad, okay. This one we do need a motion for. Sorry. The other one we didn't. We do need a motion to accept the purchase. Thank you. Councilmember...
I would like to move that this purchase be approved.
I assume that's a second. A second by Councilmember Mathie. Any further discussion? A lot of people have already voted, so, okay, you're way ahead of me. All right. The motion carries nine to zero. There are no nays to announce, Madam Clerk. And thank you, Councilmember Painter, for trying to keep me honest. Okay. The next is our city manager's report. I'm sorry, Mr. Gleason, I went to you prematurely.
Oh, good, Mayor. Mayor and Council, it's the last meeting of the month. It's the Finance Director Report. Scott, if you would, approach podium. Overall, we continue to trend well, so this is another good presentation by staff and to the community. Scott?
Senior Manager? Yeah, some good news after a brutal weekend for any Cubs fan. So continued positive trends. I start each one with a joke, it makes easier. I'm gonna go down the list. As I do in every presentation, I wanted to highlight property tax. We typically do not discuss that at all. But if you, if you look here, we're eight hundred and six thousand dollars behind prior year. And that's only because of, it's a, it's a timing issue with, with the county. We get seven payments from the county. We get typically one in May, two in June, one in August, two in September, and then a final one in November, December. So depending on when the revenues come in, and when they do their cutoff, you know, we're gonna make that up. So that, that's just an anomaly, but I wanna point that out. As of this time, you know, we've got four of the seven payments. What this is going to kind of, how you're gonna see this transact through the financials, though, in the next statement, we'll see how our other intergovernmental expenditures are lower than prior year, because, you know, a big chunk of that property tax revenue goes out for the Public Safety Pension Fund. So just trying to give you some idea of how the financials flow with the timing. So just trying to give you some idea of how the financials flow with the timing. Other categories, home rule, state sales, all still trending above budget, a little under home rule for prior year, nothing significant. Income tax doing well. Utility tax, $128,000 under budget, 122 of that is associated with telecom. So the same story as last month, we're working on proportionalizing that, you know, with, related to the pension. You know, the increase that went into effect, every dollar that is reduced in utility tax, I mean, that affects our overall budget, but what that's going to drive as far as like the reduction in the pension, we'll have a proportion for that next month. Food and beverage, $94,000 ahead of plan. Local motor fuel tax, I mean, that's an easy one, that's got to be above last year, it's 110% above last year, so it's trending above budget at this time. So once again, good indicators of the local economy. Local use tax, $54,000 above budget. We increased that budget $450,000 over the FY19 budget. That's the internet sales tax realization coming in through that category. Replacement tax, as I mentioned last month, this is another income tax-related category. The big windfall of the state and we realized at the very, in the very last month for income tax is being reflected in replacement tax in this year. It's just because that gets paid eight times a year instead of 12 times like income tax. So just summarizing, once again, good indication of a strong local economy for the city of General Fund income statement. I wanted to spend just a minute again going through the setup of this statement. First column is our budget, year-to-date actual, the revised budget remaining, so this is just the difference between the budget and the actual year-to-date, and then the trend percentage. So in some categories, we can use this annualized trend, the target is, we're four months through the year, that's 33%. So as I've mentioned before, if we straightlined every category, we should be at 33%. Well, we don't, we don't work like that, we have a lot of seasonal activities within the city, but it just gives you another thing that you can analyze and review and compare it. But for this time of the year, we're kind of, we're kind of looking at things versus prior year. So that's why I've got most of the highlights are versus that prior year column. Let me bounce back with that projection, that's when we'll start adjusting the budget, not adjusting the budget, but adjusting the projections compared to budget so we can get a projection for year-end. We probably won't start doing that until we're about six months into the year. One last comment on the setup of the statement. You can see here in the budget, we have $1.15 million use of fund balance in the budget. So we have a balanced budget, 109 million. Total revenue, 109 million. Total expenditures, balanced with 1.1 million in use of fund balance. 775,000 of that was for the BCPA Creativity Center roof repairs so that restricted fund balance from contributions made in prior years. And then there's 300,000 of the utility tax reserve going towards the pension. So we, a little bit of a pension shortfall compared to the levy. Now, I want to bring your attention down to here for the projected year-end, which right now, these budget and projected year-end, same numbers, except for the use of fund balance. Use of fund balance is not, you know, it's not a real revenue, we don't, it's just the way you balance your budget. We're projecting that we're going to use savings. So that's why if everything came through to the dollar compared to budget, we would have a $1.15 million deficit at the end of the year, a planned deficit for the year because we're using savings. So just, I get a lot of questions about how can the budget be balanced all the time? You know, it's always zero, and how does that work? Well, that's, that's just kind of a high-level explanation of use of fund balance. Going down the lines, just real quick, taxes above prior year, we've doubled the local motor fuel tax. It would be a little bit higher, but we're a little under on that property tax timing, but it's still higher than prior year due to the local motor fuel tax. Charges for services, we're a little under. We've changed the revenue recognition slightly on our Parks Department, we've got a new system in place where deferred revenue, so like if we, if we charge a lot of income for coming programs, like in the ice center and at the beginning of the year, in the spring when we have people buying season passes for the pools, we're putting that into deferred revenue, a balance sheet account, recognizing it when it actually occurs. So that all evened out, it's just, it's just going to play with the timing right now. Transfer in, I want to highlight this, is where we're significantly over prior year, and that's because we transferred the billing, the utility billing department from the Water Department into the General Fund, and so the General Fund is charging the enterprise funds for that. So transfers in is basically, most of that is charges to the enterprise funds. Salaries, I don't have anything indicated here, but we're on trend, and that's, that's a good indicator because we have $1.25 million in vacancy savings in the budget, recognizing historical trends. And plus, we do have some heavily weighted compensation activity in the earlier part of the year due to parks. I mean, we, we could have offsets for that in the winter for snow and ice, but at this point, that's a good indicator. Slightly ahead in benefits, trend-wise, we have people retiring, they're taking advantage of, you know, what was discussed previously, so we're bumping up. We're going to be watching that category. Other intergovernmental expense, this is what I was referring to when I was talking about revenues. Right now, it is under the prior year, and that's because property taxes haven't, they're not at the same stage as they were last year. A significant portion of property taxes goes to the Public Safety Pensions. So we haven't transferred it out yet into other intergovernmental, so that's why that's under, but that'll true up. Other expenditures, it's under, this is, it's a little difficult to explain, but for the ambulance service, we, those get billed out, and then there's a lot of large adjustments that come back due to Medicaid and Medicare insurance adjustments. So right now, we book those as an expense, it's just a little bit of a timing difference from last year, but I don't see anything material happening there, but that's just the explanation for that. And then finally, transfer out doubling of the local motor fuel tax. So we have the revenue up here in taxes, we bring it into the General Fund, all the major tax revenues come into the General Fund, but then we're transferring out to the newly created Asphalt and Concrete Fund. So that's why that category is significantly higher than last year. So kind of a little flow of how the dollars are running through the income statement for the General Fund. In the next month, we'll add back in the, the fund balance projections, you know, the starting fund balance, but will be mostly through the audit, so I just didn't want to start putting numbers up there and changing them, but we're going to be mostly through the audit by this time next month. And I forgot, I was going to let you know that the last page in this, in the packet has this, it's a reference sheet for the category explanations for that income statement. Some of these, like other expenditures, well, what is that? You know, so ambulance, bad debt, related insurance write-offs, shouldn't say write-offs, adjustments, grants, economic development rebates, et cetera. So this is a little bit of a cheat sheet for those categories. I think you find it helpful because I need to look at it sometimes myself, because there's a, there's a lot that's really summarized in those categories. Enterprise funds. You know, I was asked last month about, you know, the negatives, so we're showing the year-to-dates. Right now, everything but the arena is a positive year-to-date. These commitments, POs, these are, you know, the landfill POs, you know, big things that are set up ahead at, at the very beginning of the year, but we haven't paid for them yet. Like the water fund, we have a planned use of fund balance, I think it's $8 million, you know, for the year. A lot of projects planned for the water fund. So, you know, fast forward, eight months from now, we're going to show its total year-to-date gain-loss of, you know, a negative 8 million, but it's a planned use of fund balance. We'll put in the, the beginning and ending and projected fund balances next month again so you can see where those dollars are coming from. What I'd like to highlight, as usual though, is the revenue. So we did some material, fee adjustments in sewer and storm, solid waste, we revamped a year ago. All these revenues are tracking. Golf, you know, 48% compared to trend, target of 33%, well, they should be ahead because of the summer, but golf's behind prior year. So again, I say this every month, we're watching golf, just, it's not as much activity as history. The arena, 12%, if you compare that to the target of trend of 33, it seems like it's very much under. Venue Works does a seasonal budget, and so their year-to-date budget was actually 183,000, I put that on here, and so they're at 280. So they're, they're doing better than budget so far. So the 12% for them doesn't really, for the arena, is not really indicative of how they're doing to this point. In general, though, things are looking very positive for the city, and any questions?
Questions? Councilmember Bowlin?
I always, no, I'm not going to ask a question this time. What I really appreciate, and I think the general public appreciates, is when you point out these things that you explain, because I think that is, for the public anyway, the value of these reports. Like you said, they're like, why is this, why is that? And when you explain, that's very valuable, so I appreciate that.
Second, what she said. Anything else? Thank you so much, Scott. And Mr. Gleason, anything else?
Couple of additional comments, we're going to have the events up on the screen here shortly. Luke Combs concert at the arena is this Friday, it's sold out and has been sold out for quite some time. Also, Division One Hockey, ISU Hockey is doing very well at the arena as well. Also, reminder to the community, not so much for council, because you guys are aware of this, but we do have a joint special meeting next Monday at the ISU Alumni Center. It's at 5 o'clock, it's with the Town of Normal and also McLean County. And the purpose of that is to hear from the CBB, the EDC, and the Chamber, how, you know, what services they provide the community. They are funded in large part with taxpayer dollars of the entities that are going to be hosting the meeting. And then also, now that we've got the EDC Executive Director Patrick Hovind selected, we're not in an interim for the past year-plus, almost two years, want to find out how these three entities will work more closely together. So that meeting is next Monday night, ISU Alumni Center, 5 o'clock, Town of Normal, City of Bloomington, McLean County. Thank you.
Great, thank you. At this point, the only things I want to say is, first of all, thank Councilmember Black for handling my open house on Friday, I appreciate that. That's because I also then want to thank all the people, Councilmember Bray, Councilmember Painter, Councilmember Emig, Councilmember Cravill, and Councilmember Milawonway for really record attendance at our national, excuse me, not national, our statewide Illinois Municipal League. And a special thanks to Councilmember Bray for leading us down Michigan Avenue to dinner and making all the logistical arrangements, and to Councilmember Bray, excuse me, Bray, Painter, who led us back. Anyway, I do appreciate that, that was really a great conference and a great time for all of us. I'm going to start with Councilmember Matthew.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to point out actually two things on this list in case people miss them. The first one is, we talked about earlier, the Evergreen Cemetery Walk. I've never lived anywhere else that had anything like that, and it's a really cool event if you've never attended before. We talked about it earlier in township meeting, but people might not have been watching us at that point. And then the, the second one is, for all the geeks that might be out there, is next Tuesday is the Mystery Science Theater 3000 Show at the BCPA. So I and many of my friends will be there, and I suggest you check it out because it's going to be pretty amazing.
Who says geek can't go to listen to dead people? I mean, in the first one. Yeah. Sorry.
No, man, he's not dead.
Councilmember Bowlin?
Last week, I guess it was Thursday, they had a fundraiser for Mark Furst, and I attended it, it was out at Epiphany Farms, and if anybody has an opportunity to go out there, it is absolutely beautiful. There was a competition between chefs, Chef Troy from Biaggi's and, let's see, who's the other one? Dr. Kapitos was the, and I believe Dr. Kapitos won. But the food was amazing. Fresh, air-lit tomatoes are the best. So if you ever have a chance to go out there just for the view, it's wonderful. And next year, if it's held out there, please attend, it's really nice.
Thank you. Nvoka?
Thank you. So I also attended IML, which was very, very interesting, and every year, I'm always amazed at the, the number of quality programs. You know, they're not too long, but yet very informative, you know, typically about one hour or so. I attended one on, you know, cannabis legislation, and this one was very interesting to, to hear from people who are involved in medical marijuana program and talking about the, how it actually works on a day-to-day basis. You know, as far as, you know, the security that's involved and, and, you know, the inspections, you know, that comes, that's something that you don't necessarily hear about very often. So that was very interesting. Attended another session on sports betting, and also working with the media. And it's hit to smile a lot, right?
Then you can't tell what people are thinking.
Right. And another one, retail trends, which was also very interesting. And the other one that I attended was on the, the embezzlement that happened in Dixon, Illinois. It was a documentary, so it was very interesting to see how it all unfolded over the course of about 20 years, I think. So just really amazing, so thank you. It was a real good conference, encourage everyone to attend it.
Councilmember Emig?
I want to thank the city for the opportunity to attend the IML, it was incredible, and I think all of the sessions about cannabis were standing room only, as you can imagine. So thank you for that. And just to bounce off of that topic, I hear everyone say that it's important to make sure the public knows there is a protocol for opportunities to contribute, and I will ensure that that information is shared publicly, that you are looking for a slate of issues, a timeline, and that you want an even-handed presentation. So we hear you. Thank you for the opportunity to serve.
Thanks. Councilmember Black, and then Bray.
Thank you, and I just wanted to thank Tim for helping to lead the charge on getting a joint meeting together with Normal and the county, I think that's something that is well overdue, it's probably been a half decade since we've done one, if not longer. Just off the, do you know off the top of your head, are we going to be following the county's rules, are we going to be following Normal's, or are our rules for the meeting?
Do we know, Leslie?
Honestly, we don't. We put a call into Town of Normal's city manager this morning to confirm. We know what we're doing for posting, we're confirming that we're doing the same agenda identically, and then what rules we'll be following. I don't know if Jeff has any more to say, but we should know more this week. And we plan to post as our traditional time, so it'll be available, excuse me, internally at noon on Thursday, and then to the public at 5:00 PM on Thursday.
Thank you. And the reason I ask is because public comment rules at the county in Normal are significantly different than our public comment rules, and I just want to make sure that if it is in fact we're following the county's rules or Normal's, that we're providing that feedback to the public.
We do plan for public comment. I mean, this idea was ours here at the city, you know, at the suggestion of council, so definitely public comment's going to be a component of this meeting.
Awesome, thank you.
Councilmember Bray, and then Cravill?
Thank you, Mayor. And I too want to comment and thank the city for sending our delegation to the Illinois Municipal League. Bloomington is well thought of around the state, and while in attendance, folks want to hear our ideas while we exchange and get information from them and get their perspectives as well. We attended multiple sessions, and then the entire program was wrapped up with what they call a council members' roundtable. The room was packed, and Julie and I were in attendance, or Councilmember Emig and I were in attendance, and people just kept arriving. And it was, it was really exciting to see that level of engagement from folks around the state to talk about issues of all sorts. And we had a very good moderator who kind of walked us through the things that were on the hearts of the various council members, visiting about issues that ranged from zoning to, of course, cannabis was discussed as well. But there are, there are people that really love and care for their communities, and it was really great to touch base with them, and I think that you have folks here on your city council that really love and care about this community, and I hope that we'll continue to build on that. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you. Alou Macario and then Cravill.
Yeah, I just want to wish everybody a happy Latina, Latino, Latinx Heritage Month, and also thank everybody who came out to the open house at the Sunnyside Garden. I heard that was awesome, and it was very sad to have had to miss it. And thanks for my colleagues on the council who represented us well at IML. I can't wait to hear what that experience was like. And then just want to throw out a heads-up about two events coming up. The NAACP banquet is this Friday. I don't know if tickets are sold out, but it would be worth checking out. They are sold out. Okay, well, you know, there's always somebody who gets sick that day, so maybe you can snag a ticket. But yeah, really excited to be attending that. It will be, I think, my third one in a row that I'm attending, so just want to shout them out for all the work that they're doing in the community. And then finally, October 26, we are going to be having our second annual celebration for Dia de los Muertos at the McLean County Museum of History, which is also being co-sponsored by Conexiones Latinas and the Western Avenue Community Center. It's free, so there will be a lot of culturally relevant activities. It's totally open to the public. Last year, we screened a movie. This year, there will be some really amazing dancers and performance artists there, so definitely worth checking out.
Thank you very much. And then last but not least, Councilmember Cravill.
Thanks, Mayor. Also, I wanted to express my appreciation for, you know, being able to go to the IML conference, learned quite a bit, and like other council members have said, it was great to collaborate with other members that were dealing with the, with the same issues, and there was a good opportunity to do that. And, you know, we heard about things that, like, you know, I know Alderman Malowamway talked about fraud, right? And it was a good session that discussed different kinds of fraud, and, you know, one of the things that I think that the goal or the purpose of it, right, is to...
Not that he's an expert.
Yeah, yeah, no. To allow us to come back and, and make sure that we're doing some of those things that they were talking, that they talked about. Also wanted to thank those persons that attended a open house I had at the Dunraven subdivision over the last week, so thank you.
Thank you. At this point, we are going to go into executive session, but before we do, we are going to take a two-minute break, bathroom break. Now, I can assure those of you who are here that when we come back, the only thing that we're going to do is to adjourn. If you want to get that riveting moment and come back as we adjourn, you're certainly welcome, but we're not going to be doing any more business, public business. We are, we are going to be adjourning for personnel, and I'll, I'll take a motion for that. We're adjourning for two minutes.
Claims.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, claims. You said personnel. I said, yeah. Under, yeah.
So moved.
Two minutes, well, we're doing two minutes. Yeah.
Mayor, would you mind just citing, would you mind citing the section?
Section 2C-12 of 5ILCS. When we come back, right.